The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
Sammy refused. All right, I'll call the Board Reet to order. And six board members are present, one is excused. And at this point, I will turn it over to whoever's starting.
I'll start.
Okay.
And then I'll turn it over to Vicki. Tonight, our superintendent Board Reet is focused on the work of special education in the department, looking very specifically at the issues and concerns and how we're addressing disproportionality and closing the achievement gap for our special needs students. So I'll turn it over to Vicki.
Very good, thank you. Thank you to the Board for allowing us this opportunity. Over the past two months, this team has been presenting to the smaller Board Work Group, the Engagement in Climate Group. And after the last presentation, we asked what the next step would be. And the board members present said, this should come to the whole Board so everybody can see all the good work that's happening in special education. The work they have to do and the people they have to lead, it's very challenging, as you all know. In my opinion, they have some of the hardest jobs in this district. They oftentimes are the ones that have to say no in very difficult circumstances. But the end goal is doing what's in the best interest of the student. And I think the data they show you today and their initiatives that they've been working on for the last couple of years, hopefully you'll see as evidence of them doing what they need to do for our kids. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Hendrickson.
Hi, most of you know me, I'm Claudia Hendrickson. And I'm the Executive Director of Special Education and Pupil Services. And to my left, I have Dara Attendari, who's the Associate Director of the East Side Schools' Special Education Programs. And next to her, we have Julie Harris, who is the Associate Director for the West Side Schools. Along with that, they each have additional duties. And we thought it would be important, and I can hand this out at the end, or I can hand it out now, it might get in the way if I hand it out now. So that, I know that many times you go out into the community and community members ask you, who should I call, who should I call? And many times, you call Vicki or you call me. But if you, in order to get, for you to get to know better and hook them up to the right person immediately so they don't go from person to person, I'm giving you a list of what the other duties as assigned are for each of the associates, as well as our supervisors. Within this list, there's some things about the whole department that is on here because this includes Student Services too. But again, you might get questions about the counselors, you might get questions about the social workers. So our McKenna Vento, these are the names and the phone numbers of who you would contact. So I think it's a real good reference for you all. Tonight, we're really gonna talk about the areas that we've been focusing on as a department. And... See, I know you should have driven. All right, so the mission for the Green Bay Area Public Schools is that we educate all students to be college career and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. Within that, our department looked at what we can do as a department to exact that change and more specifically, what are our, what is our mission and goals. So we looked at addressing disproportionality and closing the achievement gap as our two main areas of focus for the last three years, or two and a half years. So first of all, under addressing disproportionality, we're looking at the over-identification of African-American and Native American students, males, in the area of emotional behavioral disabilities. We're also on the verge of over-identifying white students in their area of autism. So we've had a lot of work focused around those areas in the last two years, more specifically this past year. And then the second one, so that's why we looked at a systematic process for the evaluation teams. And we'll go into that a little further into our presentation. We also looked at achievement gaps, and we can get into that further also. But specifically, we were looking at closing the achievement gap in the area of reading as dictated by the Department of Public Instruction. That is known to special education world as "Reading Drives Achievement" in the state of Wisconsin, or "Results Driven Accountability" in the entire United States. So with equity as the center of everything, we wanted to give you this little, these two comparison charts about equity and all of the pieces that go with equity. And in the center of all that is culturally responsive practices. And every single thing that we do really lends itself, in order to be an equitable district and have equitable results for all of our students, we have to be looking at everything with a culturally relevant pedagogy. That's a real nice graph for that. With that, Dara, we'll start talking to you about the work we're doing for disproportionality.
So in the area of disproportionality, we are gonna look specifically at over-identification of specific student racial groups and specific disability category areas. But we are also going to look at disproportionality as it speaks to over-representation of specific racial groups who are disciplined at a higher rate in comparison to their other peers, yet they represent a smaller proportion of the total student population. So just an overview of what disproportionality is. It's the over or under-representation of a given population group. Sometimes it's defined by racial categories and backgrounds, but it could also be under the subject of socioeconomic status, national origin, gender, sexual orientation. So as I already stated, in our particular case, we're gonna look at the discipline data for specifically African-American students in our district, as well as the over-identification in the area of EBD for African-American students and Native students.
And for the sake of time today, we have a lot of hyperlinks that you can look at at your leisure and come back to us at a later time and ask us questions about those. But we wanted to make sure we got through all of our slides today. And so, Dara, explain disproportionality under what, GBAP, under that hyperlink for GBAPs?
So in order for a district to be identified as disproportionate, they have what they call a disproportionality risk ratio. For our purposes today, we only pulled out the data for EBD. And we have a trend that extends for seven years. So through 2010, the 2011 school year, through the 2016, 2017 school year, specifically in the area of emotional behavioral disability. If you look at the chart behind you, if you look at the various racial student groups, you can see the comparison and you can see the numbers. So in order for a district to be identified as disproportionate, they have to have representation that is two times likely for three consecutive years. So if you look at a Green Bay Area Public Schools, starting at 2010, and you look, for example, at black or African-American, you can see they were 3.6, 3.7, 3.34, 3.35. And as you can see, even though they are decreasing, with our last data being 2.37, they still, for seven consecutive years, have been over-identified. So when DPI gets this data, they look at that and they say, I think we have a problem here, so what are some things that you're gonna do to address that? If you look in the area of American Indian or Alaskan Native, the same applies to them. But this year was the first year where we were not identified as disproportionate. But if you look at the number, it's 1.9. And in order to be disproportionate, you need to be 2.0. So we know that we are not out of the woods when we look at that. And so, again, this is just for emotional behavioral disability. And then if you look at the other races, for example, for Hispanic students, while they make up about 28, 29% of the total student population, as you can see, the highest that they would have been is .57. If you look at Asian students, you can see the numbers. Last year, .16. And then if you look at white students, you see that their numbers don't get to 1 as a total. So when we look at, again, the student groups and the races, and then we look at how many we have and how we are identifying, we need to talk about what are some things that we can do to be more proactive to appropriately identify students and understand why we might have over-representation.
So I wanna be clear, just because I know that we look at this data over and over, and I think I brought this once before to the Board. So if you, when you look at the Native Americans for 16, 17, they were 1.9 times as likely to be identified based on the total number of Native Americans in the district. If you look at African-Americans, they're 2.37 times more likely to be labeled a student with emotional behavioral disability. So they, the Department of Public Instruction does a whole formula that determines the risk ratio based on the percentage of African-Americans in this district, based on the Native Americans in this district, based on the white kids in this district, to determine that risk ratio. Anything over 1.0 or over 2.0 is problematic. Is that fair?
What about the, what about the reverse? I mean, I, you know, I get that it's probably unlikely that, you know, black kids, certainly 3.3, 3.6 percent times more in earlier days than coming down. But I would venture to guess that there probably isn't something specific about Asian populations that you would be six times less likely to have an emotional behavioral disability. And I don't think it's likely that if you're Hispanic or Latino, you would be half as likely. So is there a flip side to that where we might be missing something?
Yeah, so that's why we are looking at the, it's either under identification or over identification. And so when we look at these two specific groups, if you remember that first slide that we showed you with those wheels, where we had culturally responsive practices in the middle and we had equity in the middle, what we think is that if you don't necessarily understand the culturally responsive practices of various racial groups, when you are the assessor, you might have what your background is and what this would look like. But if you were to understand the culture of the student, you could look at it through a different lens. And so therefore, what you might say is yes, actually might be no. So those are the different things that we are putting into practice to say. When you're looking, for example, if you're gonna interview a family and you ask a family, what are some things you like to do for fun? Depending on who the family is, if we use a middle-class background, what we like to do for fun, and I live in northeast Wisconsin, I might like to go camping, I might like to go canoeing. That might be something that's specific to that culture. But if I'm African-American and I live in northeast Wisconsin, but say I came from a big city, I might like to go to the movies. My family trip might be going to Wisconsindale. So we just need to make sure that our educators understand the various backgrounds and understand the various cultural practices of the students that they serve so that when they are making assessments or they're doing interviews, they are making valid determinations because now they have that background knowledge that they didn't necessarily have before. And it really is just a matter of, people don't know what they don't know. So as soon as we get those tools in their hands and we get those strategies to them and they start implementing them, they find it much easier to be able to understand where students are coming from and then understand how they can implement different instructional practices. And then they'll say like, oh, okay, I get it. This student does the same thing as that one, but I just need to understand it from a different lens.
And I, we don't wanna make assumptions about, so we need to dig deeper into the data to find out the under-representation as well as the over-representation. And the Department of Public Instruction is really, really focused on the over-representation. But the digger, the deeper we dig, I think we're going to find some of those answers to, Andrew.
When we look at any of these numbers here, just the 0.58 in the lower left-hand corner there, is that compared to the entire population of students?
Yes, so...
Okay, so it's not, it's not disproportionate just to white kids, it's to the entire population?
Right, so, yeah.
That clarification is needed there.
Right, so the, so disproportionality comes in when you say, only 10% of your students out of your 22,000 are, for example, black or African-American. But when you look at them for EBD, they are, you know, two and a half times more likely to be identified. And that just says, like, your numbers are skewed. They should be, they would be on the lower end like anybody else.
Yeah, and what I, I guess what I'm looking to the clarification on, two and a half times more likely than who?
Than their, than their, than, than the other students. But typically, the white, the white students.
All students together.
It's any of the students, but it's looking at what student groups represent what. So if you, the majority of students here are white, for example. So if we were looking at all disabilities, we would expect that typically across the disability areas and depending on what it is, it would be more, you know, the larger the population of the students, you would have that amount.
So if we had a column for all students, all of those would be 1.0 then for all students?
And I think what's important to note is when you look at the low-incidence programs that are more objective, the visually impaired, the hearing impaired, the physically handicapped, across the district, it's proportionate based on, so if we have, what, 60% of our students are white, 60% of the students with orthopedic impairments are white. If there's 9% students African-American, 9% of the students with hearing impairments are African-American. It's very proportionate, except for when you get to the subjective areas of emotional disturbance, learning disability, mental, intellectual disabilities and autism. So, and other health impairments. But that's for another day.
Okay, so when we talk about how we will address the data that we have before us, we have to make sure that we know what it is that we are working with. And so, again, when we think about equity or we think about being culturally responsive, we looked at our demographics for our school district for the 2016, 2017 school year. So as you can see, Green Bay is now deemed what is known as a minority-majority district where students who are in minority groups make up the majority of our student population. And then white students make up less than that. So as you can see, our white student population is 46%. Then our next largest group is Hispanic at 28%, black at 10%, Asian 7%, American Indian 4%, and two or more races is, is that 5?
5.
Sorry. So when we look at our teacher racial demographics on the other side, we see that 95% of our teaching population is white, whereas it's 2%...
Yep.
It's like 1% black, American Indian is...
2% Asian and everything's less than that.
Yep. So... We think that's very important data to have when we're looking at solutions to address how we could be more equitable and how we could employ more culturally responsive practices. And so if we think about the teachers that we have and how we can get them to be...
Should I go back?
Did you miss something?
No, but do you want me to still stay here? Sorry.
No, you can, you can.
So we wanted to show that slide because that leads into our next area of disproportionality, which is school discipline. And so, again, when we talk about school discipline and we look at our racial demographics for our various student groups, we again see over-suspension for certain groups. So we have two links that we have shared. So we have this first link, which is called "Suspension by Student Groups." And that's data that we have covering, I think it's about three, is it four years? So it's like from 2013 through 2015, 2016, and you gotta scroll down, so, and you can see. And you can look at this graph at your leisure again, but we have them color-coded by the different groups that we have and we have what student groups are getting the most amounts of suspension. So for African-American students, again, they represent 10%, but they get about...
19 points.
19...
19 to 20%, yep.
To 20% of suspension overall in the district. And this is something that has been on the radar for, well, I know it was here when I came and then I think it was here a couple of years before that. So we're just looking at different ways that we can, again, address, what do suspensions look like in our, they subjective versus objective.
What about the, what about the newer data? I get that this came off of a state report, but we should have really up-to-the-minute data on in-house, right? Has it gotten better since 15, 16?
It's still pretty comparable.
Less, less, has it gotten less disproportion, have we improved the disproportionality in the last year and a half that's not on this chart?
Probably not.
Kinda hovered around that 20 and, okay.
The, the smaller work group had asked for a breakdown of that, Mr. Becker, so I'll have that prepared, I think we're looking at June, so we can have all the yearly data ready.
And then the other link that we provided was, these are students who receive 10 or more days of suspension. And this is specific to special education students. So we know that once a special education student receives more than 10 days of suspension within a school year, we have to start looking at, do we have them in the appropriate placement? We have to look at different patterns of change. And we have to look at how we can provide services for them because we don't want them to be continually removed because we understand that if students are at school, they're getting instruction, they can make progress. And it's difficult for them to make progress when they are not at school. And again, it shows that African-American students for three consecutive years, you have a chart where you have five students who had 10 or more days of suspension for two years in a row.
More than 10 days of suspension.
More than 10 days. And then you had seven who had more than 10 days for the 2014, was that the 2014, 2015 school year?
13, 14.
13, 14.
Yeah. So the thing to note is, this is, this comes from us from the Department of Public Instruction. If you're a student with a disability and you're suspended for more than 10 days, we have to provide some sort of services. You can write a plan, the day you are going to suspend, after the 10th day, of what you're going to do. These particular students had no such plan in place. That's what we've been working on a lot this past couple, this past two years, is ensuring that we have something documented in IC as to what we're going to do, what services we're going to provide during the 11th day, the 12th day, the 13th, and sometimes up to 20 days, not consecutive, but throughout the whole year.
Right, and what we've done is that the special ed supervisors will go in and they look at data very consistently, like every other week, they're looking at data. And when they see students who are at seven days, they start to pull the teams together to talk about, why is it that this student is being suspended so much? Do we recognize a pattern? And so what we do is we start to do manifestation determinations at the school level to determine if indeed it is their disability. And then we try to be more proactive to put things into place so that students don't have to get to the level where they potentially have to be removed. Now, it's not to say that they cannot be removed because sometimes there will be, you know, different things that occur where removal is necessary. But if we are more proactive and we have things in place, if we get to the point where we have to offer compensatory services, we will have that ready to go.
Congratulations. Graduation.
And so, and so finally, that leads us to graduation rates, where we, again, are disproportionate, we are making improvements. The achievement gap is closing. But when we look at the Green Bay Area Public School District overall, if we compare students with disabilities to their non-disabled peers, students with disabilities who are black or African-American actually are graduating at a slightly higher rate than their non-disabled peers. And the overall number we had was about, it's between 53 and 57%. And then here on this chart, we have a breakdown, looking at the various disability areas. And so of this 53% of African-American students with disabilities who graduated, it just breaks down the percentage based off what area it was. So for example, EBD was 25%.
So only 25% of African-American students who are emotionally disturbed, labeled emotionally disturbed are graduating in four years, yes.
Right.
And are they, these are people who've been here all four years?
Yes. Most of the time, yes, most of the time, these are, they're, they're homegrown, if you will. So, you know, every now and then, we might get students who transfer, but the majority of these students have typically been Green Bay students historically.
But I think that was another area that your group had at, at in Katie and Laura's. That's another one you wanted us to double-check on, correct? About whether they were homegrown or not, right? Because the last time we looked, they were, but we want, we wanna double-check and make sure, so we'll look through that.
So from this data, that path well for us, they were. The majority of them were Green Bay students.
What's the rate of all students with EBD, what's their graduation rate?
So when we look at all students...
I don't know that we have that right here tonight. We'll get that, we can get that for you if you want that too.
We had one that had a cohort, but it was a six-year cohort.
Yeah, we had a six, yeah, we did have a six-year cohort that we can get you.
I'm just curious how you compare.
Tell me what I did again.
Go, go.
Challenge.
So go to President, next to share. So we shared all of the data with you, just so you can know where we are and what it is that we are working with. And so from that, we know in order to make progress, we have to have plans of action. So the Special Education Department does work collaboratively with Pupil Services. And so what we're doing is that we're working with the schools and the Pupil Services Department to implement the multi-level systems of support framework that was developed and rolled out this school year. And so, so far, that has been offering a lot of different solutions for us because it provides a tiered system of support for all students. So no matter, yes, ma'am?
Yes, I don't wanna interrupt, but I wanna go back to graduation and clarify something.
Okay.
What I want to know is that, I know that students can continue their education and not graduate if they choose to, to age 21. And when I, I just pulled up YSDAT to see if I could see some things. And I could see some significant increases in the numbers of students graduating after six years versus five years versus four. And so my question is, do, what happens at four years if a parent says, you know, I want my child to continue to receive services and support? Are they considered a non-graduate? Or are they considered a graduate? And then as more students come on in fifth and sixth year, do you see what I'm saying? Or what I'm asking?
So it depends on what track students are on. So here, our students are either on the high school diploma track or usually typically our students who complete are gonna go to 21. They are...
The alternate curriculum.
They're in an alternate curriculum. So, you know, those are like our work experience students and the students who would stay longer. So...
Students with intellectual disabilities or sometimes students on the autism spectrum. So that's why we would look at the 50% and not be surprised because that's the four-year cohort. But when you're a student with an emotional behavioral disability or a learning disability...
You take regular, you're on a regular high school track. So the same things apply to you. You have to have the same credits and you have to have the same requirements to graduate. So we do know that we've had some students to eventually graduate, but they stayed two extra years. And those are the students that we try to connect, like with the academy in a different alternate programming.
But they're, they're cognitively able, is what you're saying?
Yes, they are, yes.
That may be what is getting in the way sometimes.
Exactly.
And Julie will get into some of that when she looks at the reading data, that although most of the students with disabilities in our district are not identified because of a reading disability, the majority of our students are unable to read that have disabilities. So we'll get into that too.
Thank you.
And so, again, with our plan of action, we're working with the schools to implement the multi-level systems of support. And then the other thing that we definitely know we need is that we know that our teachers need professional development. So we can't just tell them, you need to be culturally responsive or you need to engage in culturally responsive practices. We understand that we need to provide the professional development. They need to be able to do that. So what we have done for the upcoming school year is that we are gonna be very focused on our PD plan and bring in experts. So these are people who, this is the work they do. They do work all over the nation. They've done a lot of work specifically in northeast Wisconsin. And we see... And we see that there are other, uh, school districts who have demographics like ours, for example, and find it like in Appleton, who have brought these presenters in, and they've come up with great plans of actions, and they're making some really good strides. So, um, we want to reach out to some of these individuals to provide training for our staff and other members of our district in order to really provide our students those, uh, extra services and instructional strategies. They need to be successful.
And we brought in, um, a speaker a while ago, but many of our staff have turned over since we had Gary Howard in here. Um, we don't have many of the schools. When we look at the equity teams that they put together when Gary Howard came, there's not one person still in that building that was part of that equity team. So we don't want this to be a one and done. We want it to be built into the culture of everything we do, which is why we're working very closely with the Equity Department and Student Services to ensure that we're all on the same page, so we can bring that out to the bigger, larger district as a whole. And we've been, uh, working collaboratively with teaching and learning this school year, um, and particularly focused with the secondary schools where we see there being even more separation, um, to ensure that we're all on the same page and speaking the same, um, message.
So thinking about that, just about the types of offerings we have for classes, when we look at our ninth grade offerings, we used to offer many different levels of math. We're offering a fewer number of different levels of math because we want to make sure that all kids are challenged at high levels. So that would just be an example of the type of thing.
And then, um, other things that we've done is with respect to graduation rate, not just to improve graduation rate for students who are African-American or black, but also to improve the overall graduation rate of our students with disabilities, because we understand there is a gap there too. Um, we have had our teachers participate in various, uh, opportunities through our statewide transition network, through CISA seven. And so they've really, uh, offered up a lot of great programming and a lot of great things in order for us to make this happen. And now they've also, uh, introduced a grant where school districts can get up to the hundred, how much can they get? Twenty-five?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars to implement different programming for their students so that they have a plan of action they can follow once they depart, um, the K-12 system. Um, when we are talking about how can we increase graduation rates for our students who are African-American or black, uh, one of the collaborations we did with the Equity Department is that we wanted to expose the students to, um, other post-secondary opportunities. And so we looked at, um, talking about historically black colleges or universities, because overall, um, sixty percent of African-Americans who have at least a undergraduate degree receive them from a historically black college or university. And then often they go into, uh, advanced level training or advanced degrees at different institutions, which would be what we call PWI, predominantly white institutions. But we understand that, um, if they at least have an undergraduate degree to start, then they can go on to success. And the other thing is too, if we get the students to an institution, we get them graduated, oftentimes they come back to where they were, and then we can add them to our workforce, you know, and that can be another bucket we have for thriving workforce. So one thing we've done, um, the last school year is that, um, we took students to the Chicago Classic in Chicago. We took twenty-eight students from all of the high schools and a couple of middle schoolers down to Chicago, to Soldier Field, where they had the opportunity to participate in a historically black college, uh, fair. And then they also had the opportunity to, uh, attend a football game. And then the following week, they had another HBCU college fair in Milwaukee, um, at Benson High School. And we were able to take eighteen students in seven chaperones, um, where they had the opportunity to learn about filling out the FAFSA. They got information from the NC double, uh, NCAA, not the sports part, but the academic part, that they talk about the different requirements for college and the different things that you need to be successful. Um, for our students who are gonna stay till twenty-one, we are really working on creating a institution for community-based instruction, where we can have our own facility, where our students are really learning the skills to be able to work, be able to live, uh, independently or semi-independently, and we're, um, working on writing a grant for that. And then the other thing we do is we attend the African Heritage Emergent Leaders Institute, which a lot of our administrators here attend as well to learn about, um, different ways we could be more culturally responsive from some of the leaders in the nation around that subject. So those are the things that we have in place right now.
And we, we just, uh, yesterday? No, last week, Thursday, we had our fourth year of our transition fair ran by the Green Bay area public schools, and even though it was on a snow day, we had a really great turnout. We learned some great things that, we actually had a better turnout of staff and families from other sides of town when it wasn't on a conference day. And it was in such a bright, cheery spot that, and we have university, four-year universities there, we have two-year universities there, you know, we have to have our Green Bay UWGB, and we have to have NWTC, and, um, we had the Palmita Hair Salon, and then we had different agencies too. So, we're not just putting our kids into a track of, here's the, how you get social security when you're twenty-one. This is how you can get a job when you're twenty-one, so.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk about educational evaluations and the process that we undertook in this last couple of years to analyze how we can address disproportionality. Um, and so essentially what we did is we looked at the way we were evaluating students, and we found that there was a lot of, um, different, different manner, should I say, in the way that students were being tested. And so, for example, you might have school psychologists on the east side, maybe at Provo, conducting evaluations that would be different, using different assessment materials, um, different times in which observations would take place, that type of thing, than somebody maybe over at Southwest. And so everybody's doing it a little differently, using different tests, and, and we looked at kind of putting together a little model for that so everyone can kind of know exactly what we would expect, to be a little bit more systematic, systematized in that process. And, um, we found that we really wanted to make it even more so, and to add the equity lens in, um, because that was the part, as Dara was saying before, when you have ninety-five percent of our workforce being white, and we're serving many different cultures, uh, we need to provide education around that. And so we brought that equity, equity lens into this process. And so we created teams. Um, so we have, um, quadrants for quadrants, uh, for, throughout the district. And there's a school psychologist on the evaluation team and a program support teacher on the evaluation team. And they are charged with completing and conducting evaluations that are done in a systematic and very objective manner. And so we developed what we called an evaluation manual. And this manual is actually designed after the DPI manuals, very similar in layout. Um, and it actually really functions pretty well. You can really click on any disability category, and you can find out information about the disability and what evaluation tools we want to administer for students. And in this process, what we found is our evaluation teams feel so much better about the work they're doing because they know what to do, and they have learned how to do it at a, at a higher level. And so we are finding that, we're meeting on a weekly basis with the evaluation teams, and looking at their data, looking at all the information, um, and making notes so that we can amend this and update it at the end of the year also. This has been shared with all of the principals, it's been shared with the teachers, so people understand what we are, um, measuring when we conduct evaluations. So it's been a very comprehensive process since the beginning of this year to get this up and running.
Julie, I'm gonna ask you to go back a bit. Did I hear correctly that prior to these teams that the, the assessments were being conducted with a wide variety of instruments, that there was no standard?
You know, as a school psychologist or, um, a program support teacher, you have many tests that are available to you to conduct. You can conduct an IQ test with multiple different tools, right? And so we have twenty, at the time, about twenty-one school psychologists, and they might be all doing different things out there. Not to say that any of them are better or worse than the other, but-
Understand that, but I mean, it, it just seems odd that we would not have had a standard approach-
Correct.
At least at first blush, and then, you know, you bring in other things as you need them, but-
Right. And that's what we did. We did an analysis, and we found that there was a lot of difference with what was being administered throughout the district. And that's why we wanted to refine it and be more focused in our work, so we could-
There were many steps that were wedded to the-
Was that, was that by design, or was that just a, a kind of a drift?
I think it was a drift. And so many of these tools are available still with, within the model, if you look at the Educational Evaluation Guide. Many of the tools are available to use, but what they're finding is they're being more systematic in that approach, so that we can do better case studies. Because we want to be able to determine, you got a student who's- And, you know, you look at what is being measured, um, by one person, we want to do a case study and do an analysis if you're using the same tools, you know, and building in that cultural awareness piece, if we're getting similar results. You know, we're really trying to get down to that point of doing some really good, strong analysis, and it's different, difficult if you're using a wide variety of tools.
And I'm sorry, Claudia, you started to say something that touched you on.
No, so you answered it.
Okay, alright.
Does that help?
Yeah, still seems very curious though.
Okay.
Well, we did an inventory, like, four years ago, what the school psychs and the PSTs had, because there was questions about. The school psych and the PST were giving, both of them were giving rating scales for emotional behavioral disability. Yet one was giving this rating scale, and that one was giving that rating scale, and what was the purpose of both of them giving the rating scales? So we were trying to narrow it down, and through that, that's where we found out the huge variety of, of resources that people were using. And some were getting real, real deep into it, and some were being more surface.
Well, yeah, the, the concept of inter-rater reliability comes to play, and it sounds like that would just be a mess.
It was.
And then there were, you know, the outside pressures of schools, you know, on wanting them to, wanting the help for the students, so therefore, well, if that test didn't work, can you find another test? Can you find another test? Can you? If you search hard enough, you'll find a test.
So we did also, we really dove into each disability category, and we continually are assessing, what are the best tools? What are the tools that have the highest reliability and validity? And we're trying to select those for the evaluations. Again, make sure that when we are conducting our evaluations, we are doing it in a way that we can have the highest probability that we are making the best decision. Because when you make a decision about a child having a disability, it's a very critical decision in the life of that, that child and the family. So we want to get it right. So this is kind of a way that we've, we've addressed it, and feel like we're making some really nice progress. The other components within here, um, you think about autism. Autism, we've really dove into because we are, again, almost disproportionate with white males identified with autism in the district. There's, we have four hundred and seventy-seven students currently identified with autism. It used to be a low incidence disability, and now it's the second highest disability behind specific learning disabilities. Well, speech and language is always the highest, right? And then you have, um, specific learning disability, and then you have autism, and that just, it's large, it's a high number. So we're really trying to get down to the evaluation, um, process with that. So we're looking at the, um, pretty much the interviews that are taking place, how are those interviews being conducted? Um, and are we using the best tools? So. We can go on to the next slide then?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Okay, so this is just a description of the building and educational evaluation team school psychologists. So, we have evaluation team school psychologists now, as I mentioned, within those quads. And then we also have an early childhood, um, team, and then we have a bilingual team also. So there's six teams district-wide, um, functioning in this manner at this time, and they are conducting evaluations for our students, initial evaluations. And they're doing reevaluations for any students who are currently in our system who are being referred for another disability. The other thing that we noticed in Green Bay is that there would be a student would, would be identified with, um, maybe other health impaired. And then the next year, they'd be, or maybe even the same year, referred again for emotional behavioral disability. And maybe another time would be referred for autism, and maybe another time SLD. So we're having these multiple evaluations, and we're like, whoa, why, why is that? So we're really trying to streamline that process also, and again, be really thoughtful in our reevaluations. So that's where we're getting those evaluation teams also in that process, um, to be involved. The building level school psychologists in this process, by taking away those initial evaluations, it's opening their time up to be able to work more with students with disabilities. About eighty percent of our time is for school psychologists, is, um, directed or paid through special education. So we want about eighty percent of their time to be working with students with special education needs. And so we are having them work on academic and behavioral supports and progress monitoring, and coaching staff within the buildings to be able to help them, um, with those types of, of skills, so they can learn them. And about twenty percent of their time would be working with students without disabilities, maybe through the LST process, um, the learning support team process at the building levels, so that they can be supporting and assisting as students are getting to that point of referral. So we're really trying to be focused in our work at the buildings to close the gaps, the academic and behavioral gaps for students with disabilities, because we know, based on a lot of what Dara shared also, that we have large gaps, and we have an over-identification of suspensions around our own behavior, and we also have huge gaps in academics here.
So running groups and being proactive. So with counselors and social workers able to support the regular inside of the house, the, we have more time for the psychologists to support the special outside of the house. Run groups for the students that have liked, um, areas of concern. Go into classrooms and do professional development in the behavior-focused classrooms, so that they're actually, um, we're not just responding to crisis. We're being re, proactive.
Right. And so Claudia mentioned before, results-driven accountability is a federal movement. Um, and so essentially, reading drives achievement is what's driving our work in the state of Wisconsin right now. This is the first year in which reading drives achievement is in effect. So, uh, if you want the next slide. So essentially, we are shifting from compliance in special education, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's is very important. And we're gonna continue doing that at a very high level, because when we're, when we're, um, our self-assessment, when we're in a self-assessment year with DPI, we have to make sure we're compliant, but additionally, we have to make sure that students are making gains. We need to show that, um, we are being accountable, and we are intervening appropriately for students so that they're not, you know, the gaps aren't getting wider, and they're not just sitting and, and not making progress in their reading especially. So the, the DPI are really focused on reading. They want all students to learn to read at a higher level so they can be more successful in life, if we have good, strong reading skills. So essentially what they're doing is, over a three-year period of time, they're gonna be monitoring our growth of students with disabilities primarily in reading, and that begins this school year. So the work actually began two years ago, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
In our district.
In our district, yes. Uh, this is before RDA even came into play. We were out in front of it, because we're like, you know, we want to be ready for this. And so essentially, we formed committees, we started some pilot, um, groups in, in various schools. We've done a lot of research around best practices, research-based interventions, trying to make sure that we could implement practices in a larger urban district that are gonna be able to close the gaps for students with reading. And we'll talk about math a little bit, uh, but to, to address their specific needs. So in sixteen seventeen, we increased the number of pilot schools to seventeen. And then now this year, it's really exciting, because we have every single building in our school district, every single school has interventions to address reading for students with disabilities. So we made a lot of progress very quickly. And a lot of the work that's happening around this is done with our academic program support teachers. They are doing a wonderful job, getting out there and meeting with the staff, working with the supervisors of special education to make sure that these interventions are being implemented with fidelity, the way they were designed.
And even some, what we're finding, um, anecdotally, and we can bring that to you too, some of the emails we got from people that were not for our interventions in the beginning, and they're saying, hey, look at the gains that the stu, these students at West High School made. Look at the gains that these students at Beaumont made. Uh, so it's, it's very exciting to see the teachers and the support staff becoming really excited about the growth that they're seeing.
Right. So the idea behind this is that, uh, really challenges with student learning are individualized, and we believe that the problem lies within the student that is neurologically based, that if they are struggling, that they have a neurological impairment, um, especially if they get to that point of having an identified disability. So we really want to focus on those successful interventions and get it down to the point where we are down to about four to five percent of our population. We have a long way to go. But if we can do that and close those gaps with research-based interventions, uh, that would be a really great thing for students. So, we have a list that you can look in, into, um, each one of these links, the underlying areas are links, and they'll show you. This one is the special education reading interventions, and there's a menu. We have a menu of research-based interventions that are now available throughout the district. Some of these are direct instruction interventions, where teachers are working right with the students, um, directly. And then some are computer-based interventions. And some people are like, why, I don't know about a computer-based intervention. How is that going to have an effect? But the research behind those interventions is very strong. Um, in fact, we can't find any research around, uh, direct instruction interventions for students in the middle school or the high school levels. It's pretty much computer-based interventions, if you look at what works clearing health in the National Center for Intensive Interventions. But at the elementary level, it's more of that personal, direct instruction teaching. Um, what we find with our, our computer-based interventions is artificial intelligence is growing, as you know, in our world, um, and our STEM work, you know- growing as you know in our world and our STEM work, you know, that we're doing with our schools is really focusing a lot on that. And so essentially, with computer-based interventions, you get so much more repetition. You get a high level of engagement with each individual student and you get more repetition than you can with any human being. And that's why we're seeing a lot of gains with the older kids especially, using that model. And the special ed teacher in that role or the parent, whoever's supporting it, is providing coaching and facilitation in that process. So essentially, they're trained on the intervention, they can listen in with the student when they're, when they're participating or engaged in the intervention and essentially jump in when they get stuck. If they get stuck with a specific phonemic awareness skill, for example, they provide supplemental instruction, which these programs have supplemental tools, and then they help them get over the hump. So, they're no longer stuck and they can move on to the next skill. So, there's, there's an instructional component to it, but it's very, very methodical. And then you have progress monitoring. Progress monitoring is really important in this whole process of intervention because you can implement a practice, but if you don't know the outcomes for the students, we don't know if it's working. So, these progress monitoring tools that, that we've identified through, again, a lot of research and actually recommendation from the Department of Public Instruction have been really instrumental. So, you're going to see some slides that'll show us the outcomes for students using these tools. But if you look at these interventions, you're going to see the fidelity, the amount of time that students are supposed to be spending on the intervention. If they do that, according to the research and design, it's going to show that kids should be making progress. If they're not, we need to look at what other variables are occurring and maybe if that intervention is not working for them, we need to switch it out and try something different. So, the schools implementing the interventions, we did include this slide for you so you can see all of the schools that are currently, including these interventions. And if you scroll down, you'll see the middle schools and the high schools also. Some schools have more than one intervention already embedded within it. And there's also, we have my, yeah, Reflex Math is up here. And I'm just going to talk briefly about Reflex Math because we, we wanted to address math in a way also because students with disabilities don't only have reading disabilities, they also have math disabilities. So, we thought it'd only be fair if we did implement something around math. And we know that one of the, the factors around math instruction is to have math fluency. If you have math fluency, just like if you have reading fluency, you can comprehend the material better. So, this particular intervention that we have Reflex Math is a math fluency program and it's really a highly engaging program. And we have several students who've actually mastered this where they were not fluent in their math facts of addition, subtraction, multiplication, division prior to, that are now completely fluent in those facts. So therefore, it opens up the opportunity for their brains to process more complex mathematical processes because they're not counting on their fingers anymore or trying to use a calculator. Yes?
You didn't talk about how if it appears an intervention is not working, then you need to change the intervention. How quickly do you know whether or not it's working? Because I noticed on some of them, there's supposed to be a prescribed time for 25 weeks. Does it take the full 25 weeks to determine it's not working or can we know sooner and then?
Yes, and that's where the progress monitoring comes into play. So, if a student's in a special education program, they're in an intervention and after eight to 10 weeks, you're seeing either a flat or decrease in their progress, you're probably going to look at that and say, we need to switch up that intervention. You know, you're not going to keep a student in there all year long if they're not making progress. So, it's really up to the practitioner and using their professional judgment at that time. So, some of the interventions are, you know, 36 weeks long. We're not going to have a student continue on. That's why progress monitoring is so important and that's why in the past, some of the interventions that have been implemented, maybe with, I just throw out there, Read 180 or some of the, the interventions that we've seen in other school districts throughout the area as well as Green Bay, might not have been real successful because there wasn't that progress monitoring piece to it to determine if kids were making progress or not.
And the fidelity of implementation also, which, that's what we're having, our sites are right there onsite to be looking at your data and saying, yay, this is, this is statistically significant, this is not statistically significant. I, you know, observing, watching, making sure it's being done with fidelity. That's why our intervention, our academic support teachers are going out so that there's always a person at hand to help the staff understand the data and understand the processes and give a second opinion about what's going on.
And then the other thing I was going to say about the interventions is that when we look at the various areas, it allows us to really hone in on what the specific area of delay is for the student. So, a lot of times interventions might not have been successful in the past because we might say, oh, we think the student needs reading comprehension when indeed, they might not even have basic reading skills. So, it gives us the opportunity to see what it is specifically the student needs assistance in and then we can customize the appropriate intervention for the student. And that's the other thing progress monitoring allows too, because if they're kind of flat for eight to 10 weeks, then it kind of lets us know, ooh, this might not be the right thing, maybe we need to go back and, you know, find what's more appropriate.
Julie? Okay, so we have implemented five times a year, a process of progress monitoring on using, using more of a universal tool. And this is the FastBridge A Reading it's called. And so, you know, we do this star assessment universally throughout the district and we're like, we wanted to measure in special education with all these students that are completing these interventions to be able to see what kind of global progress we're making district-wide. So, you're going to see that in the, at the beginning of the year, we were kind of in that flat growth rate. Now, we're making more aggressive growth. We're at fifty-two percent in reading of all the kids that were participating in that particular A Reading at the beginning of the year and now in January. Well, and this isn't, we got another one coming and we'll measure progress at that point, but we are seeing students make gains based on the intervention. And math is same.
Is A Reading a program or the assessment?
That is a progress monitoring program.
It's a tool, progress monitoring tool.
Yeah.
And it, it's not connected to any of the interventions that we are, it's a standalone progress monitoring tool so that there's not internal bias in the results. We're very clear to make sure, we have triangulation of data, which Julie's going to show you.
And so the same thing for math, you'll see that we've made some progress there and we'll see what the rest of the year comes out. This, this is all new and we're monitoring the progress as we go. So, this is an example of FastForward. FastForward is an intervention that we are using. It's a computer-based intervention and it measures all fibers of reading. And so essentially, it prescribes what the student needs and then intervenes. The teachers are constantly watching to see if the kids need to have some amendments to that. And so essentially, you're going to see in seven months, I'm sorry, that the students made seven months gain in a very short period of time. So, if you look at the graph, you're going to look at, there's a hundred and twen, days of use, I'm sorry, it's fifty-two days of use. And some students have made, about forty-eight or forty percent have made up to a half-year gain, fourteen percent have made one and a half years' growth, twelve percent have made one point one to one point five years' growth and twenty-four percent have made four point six to one years' growth. So, we're seeing students make some progress with this. And this is another view of, of how this is going to look. So, this is a sixth grade student using FastForward. This is FastBridge progress monitoring tool, okay? So, it's not again, connected to the FastForward program. It's a separate progress monitoring tool. And you can see the graph, the student's line is going up, right? So, that is the goal. We want to see the students' scores increasing. The two dots below are more of those anomalies or those outliers that you see sometimes when you do statistics and measurement. This student is, is clearly making some nice progress.
The dotted line is average progress, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, when you look at this particular student again in a different light, the student has taken the star assessment, okay? And you're going to see the student went from the first percentile to the eighth percentile from September to January. That's huge growth. I mean, when you talk about percentiles, you know, at the first percentile, you are scoring the same as or better than one percent of the population. Now, the student is scoring eight percent better than the population. So, you know, the seven percentile points are really significant. So, that's really nice growth. Now, this is FastForward progress and you can see where that trend line goes for all of the activities that the student is doing. And so, where you see the yellow line in there and it kind of flatlines for a while and then you see a sharp trajectory, that would indicate most likely that there was teacher intervention. The teacher realized that the student was stuck and it was stuck for a while, then jumped in, intervened, and now you saw some nice growth. Got a little stuck again and pops through. So, that particular activity is probably very difficult for the students and it's called stellar stories. So, there's probably a lot of reading involved. We don't know for sure right now because we haven't seen the student in action, but that's kind of what's the design, for the teacher to jump in when there's, when there's flatlines or, or normal growth. This is a 10th grade student in FastForward using FastBridge again and you'll see that same type of growth. This is the star assessment from the, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm used to seeing graphs where the, that dotted line would represent sort of the goal line?
The goal line, yeah.
Okay, so then, so the, so that student went from below the goal to, to at the goal?
Yes.
And if then they tracked along that dotted line for the rest of, I don't know, can't see the dates?
Yep.
For, for the rest of the graph, then they would be making the progress that we would expect them to make.
Correct.
We don't expect them to continue on that, that.
Yep.
And then they maintain, once they get into the, it looks like they're maintaining.
Mm-hmm.
Then when we test them again in September, did they maintain or did they?
That's what we have to look at, each individual student.
This is the first year, isn't it?
Yes.
So, we'll have to see for next year.
So, this would tell us that the student has met the goal that we expected already. Now, we need to change the goal, okay? So, we'll increase the goal and see if that student continues to make that same kind of growth. This is called aggressive growth and this is what we want, accelerated growth, growth for students with disabilities because they're already behind. Many students are three, four, or five years behind in their reading, so we have to go fast. We have to get these kids to move quickly on this trajectory, but given in the right So, this is 10th grade student in the star and again, went from the 18th percentile to the 23rd percentile, which is really nice growth. And again, another example of that trajectory. Now, we also have a bilingual intervention. We searched long and hard to try to find one. There aren't many out there. And so, we use iStation and Rod Otten's is our bilingual program support teacher and he's taken charge of this. So, we are seeing students make some really nice gains in this particular intervention This is Reflex Math data. You're going to see that there were 652 students in the district that started out on Reflex Math and at the time that they started, there was twenty-one, they were twenty-one percent fluent in their addition, subtraction, multiplication, division facts. At this time, measuring time in January, they were at fifty percent fluent. That's really good growth. And then you will see the triangulation here. So, Reflex Math with the star assessment with an eighth grade student, the student went from the 26th percentile to the 38th percentile from September to January. And the same student with the FastBridge, our progress monitoring tool, really jumped significantly. And you can see that it all connects. This is the actual program and how the program looks at the data. So essentially, this student's trajectory has been similar to the other measurements. So, we're seeing really nice triangulation of data. And this is another student, this just came in recently and we have an academic program support teacher who is so excited about this, a middle school student who has closed up the whole pyramid. When they start, oftentimes, that pyramid is all white. And so, when you fill it in green, that means that you are fluent. So, it's one visual representation for the students to see what they're working on at any given time in the program. And they're always talking to the students about the progress that they're making. And when you fill it up, it's like a big celebration. And this is just one little snapshot of the Systems 44 intervention. It's another one of the interventions that we're implementing this year. And this is from November, I'm sorry, September to January. And you'll see that at the beginning, students were at the beginning level when they started and now they're developing in January. But what's interesting about this data is the most growth that we've seen has been at the middle school level and actually at Washington Middle School. They made thirty percent growth in this program at Washington Middle School using this intervention. And they're really excited about the progress. So, that's been really fun to see. It's a lot of information, so if you have questions.
Is System 44 also used in regular ed still or is it just only special ed?
Generally, System 44 was always used in special ed when Read 180 was used in regular ed and/or special ed. When a kid was at a, a Lexile level that was too low to begin in Read 180, they went into System 44. What were?
Were they all, but they, were they all identified special ed?
I did not see anybody in System 44 that was not identified with special ed. But what we did find with System 44 in our analysis of what it was being instructed, they, many of the teachers were doing System 44. They had been the second and third teacher into that classroom, were not given the appropriate training in how to do that. Were putting the kids on the computer the entire time and not doing the fidelity of what System 44 and/or Read 180 is, which is thirty minutes or twenty minutes here, twenty minutes in this station, twenty minutes in this station, twenty minutes in this station. Very important why we are really getting together look fours for our principals and we also have our program support teachers going in there. They have a very comprehensive look for that they are giving us suggestions to principals who are asking, what should I be looking for in all these intervention classes? So, not something they have to use, but something that they can use so that they can evaluate the effectiveness themselves and if they, if they seem to think that they're seeing issues, they could bring somebody in to help with that.
And some of the differences, I'm sorry, just one more comment on that, is that by having the progress monitoring option now, we can really determine whether or not these interventions are appropriate. So, we'll measure them over a period of time. If they're not having the effect that we're hoping for, then we will try to find something different.
Thank you. Reading Core.
Pardon me?
Reading Core. It's part of AmeriCorps. Somebody sent me information today about, it's an intervention that is being used in Minnesota. It's used in conjunction with special education, but it's used outside of the budget.
I just thought reading.
Reading Core.
Milwaukee has some Reading Core in their district.
Intertent cities do.
Wisconsin hasn't embraced it like Minnesota has.
Well, we went and looked basically on what the, what works clearinghouse and the, the RTI intervention sites. And we looked through those because those, a lot of those have been vetted and they're determined, you know, with the most effectiveness in the most areas and that's, I think, what the group went on. Not to say that we're, we're, we have all of the interventions, but we got, we wanted to have interventions that touched every one of the different areas of disability. And now from there, we're looking at how can we expand it? But again, we don't want to go further than our ability to oversee it because we don't want to have so many interventions out there that we don't have fidelity. So, it's not something, not to say it's not something we won't look at and I will have us look at that.
It's actually not a program that you can purchase and bring in. It's a program that occurred, like Rhonda said, it occurs outside of school districts. It's funded by AmeriCorps. So, they have AmeriCorps volunteers that are trained in a very specific way of teaching reading. It teaches.
Oh, because MPS has AmeriCorps volunteers.
So, like this, like maybe the City Year Scholars would be somebody who would implement it through programming or something like that?
The who?
City Year, like the City Year Scholars that are a part of AmeriCorps.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Is that, those are the people who do, because they do like supplemental education?
Right. And I don't think they're, I think they're actually employed by AmeriCorps.
Yeah, they are. They are.
But they would.
My call them volunteers is they don't make a lot of money.
Well, right. I mean, they're nominally paid and, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But they would.
I was just looking.
If you just look it up, it's, yeah.
But the, the school districts aren't doing it, the AmeriCorps people are doing it.
The school districts partner with them to provide space and students and all that kind of stuff.
I get it, but they're not doing the training. AmeriCorps volunteers are doing interventions.
They come in trained.
After school or during the school when they're.
They come in trained, but they also are, because we've used AmeriCorps volunteer, AmeriCorps people in other positions. We had one at West.
But my point is the district didn't train them on, on Reading Core. They were trained themselves.
Yeah, they actually, a chief ground county had, that came our way last year and there were, it was coming out of Milwaukee. And Milwaukee succeeds had, had some work, I think, if I recall accurately. And they pursued Vista volunteers for ABC as well. But it's, it's sometimes a competitive grant process and I know the state was looking at it at one point too, if I'm not mistaken.
For Reading Core? Yeah, I don't think our state has been real interested in, from what I, politically, I don't know that.
Wasn't, isn't Tony Evers kind of behind that or part of that or has something to Wasn't, isn't Tony Evers kind of behind that or part of that or has something to do with that or is I'm supportive of it or something?
Not, not that I know.
I have to go back and look, cause it, it did bubble up, but I thought it was coming through Milwaukee Succeeds.
Yeah, Milwaukee pulled it in and it was, there was some, there's some political stuff going on with it.
Is it Milwaukee we're seeing?
Yeah.
With Reading Core?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'll, yeah, can ask Mark to achieve, but we, we talked about it.
Anything else? We know we have a lot of work to do, but I think we're very proud of the work that we've accomplished thus far and we're up for the challenge.
There we go. Okay, we need to find out for you, EBD graduation rates across the board. And I didn't write down any other questions.
It was the special, it was right in those two slides. The graduation rate for all students, African Americans, correct?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, well, this is, this is very good, thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting to see all the work that's gone on and, and, um, a lot of really, um, what's the word? Just really intentional work, you know, step by step, sort of getting to where we need to be. And I know it's, it's not easy work and, and, but, you know, we've, we've made a huge amount of progress over the last.
And we know that change takes two to five years, but we're still trying to make that be quicker.
Yeah, right.
We want to get on the map for closing the gaps.
Well, it's, it's really driving for results. It's really focused on that and I think that the lifting comes along with, and you had the, the piece around professional development. It's really making sure that people have the tools and the, the understandings and the ability to, you know, to be able to deliver. And people work very hard, but without those skills or without that knowledge, it's, it's more challenging, so.
And we're committed to the continued professional development.
Yeah.
Because we all know that the one, the sit and get, the one-time sit and get isn't going to make exact any change, so.
How, how can we, this won't be answered tonight, but if you can maybe help alleviate my concerns just a little bit. We have, how much, generally speaking, how much professional development time unless we do something special or carve it out? I mean, we have, how many days in a year, what a, like, ten, ten full days-ish?
You're right, it's very, very limited and, and a lot of times if it's a one-shot sit and get opportunity, there isn't a lot of learning that necessarily sticks and is translated into change in practice.
Ladies, why don't you get specific about special ed? The type of training that you do there?
Sure, for the last three years now, we've had what we call the ABCs of special education. A stands for academics, B is for behavior, and C is for compliance. We've offered that monthly for our teachers. We've built it into quads, or sections of quads, cause prep was a little big. So that this year, this group focuses on academics and this year, this group focuses on behavior. And this year, this group focuses on compliance. The next year, we rotate it so that every three years, everybody is getting professional development cohorts. So it's ongoing for that entire year. Anybody who wants to come for pay after school. On top of that, we've had autism cohorts that go weekly, or monthly, excuse me, as well as ID cohorts. Or in, we call them unique cohorts because it's the teachers who use the unique curriculum that go to those cohorts. They haven't been as greatly attended as we had hoped. We're bringing a proposal that we can use some more of the, of the early release days to specifically work on special ed because that being the greatest gap there is, we feel that we need to, our teachers have expressed to us that we are preaching to the choir. So they want us to be able to, to explain what we're explaining to them, to everybody. Again, that puts in alignment what John and I, what we've been doing with Tom, or excuse me, the, the Teaching and Learning Department. So we've collaborated to start talking about what does universal design for learning mean for all of the departments? ELL, special ed, regular ed, ongoing technology, so that we're all speaking the same language. They put that, their show on the road a couple of months ago, got some feedback refining it. But I, I feel like we have a lot of professional development out there for our staff in multiple different ways. The one thing we don't do is during the school day because we're always shorthanded in special ed. So therefore, we don't want to pull teachers out to not have subs in the day. But we are, we, the last two years, we committed to having the entire special education department out two different times. And then this year, we pulled out all those, all of the paraprofessionals for all day, for a two-hour training around behavior and behavior management. So I think we're, we're really always looking for, for unique ways to provide professional development, but we never want the one and done. And we also ask after the professional development, what more do you want? What, what went well, what didn't go well, so that we're tailoring our professional development to their needs. We have an, we had an ongoing newsletter and we need to really get that back up and running. Where we have, we have sites on our intranet where people can go to our intranet site and always see frequently asked questions. We keep that running. We have compliance pages in there, examples of IEPs, examples of behavior plans. We have lots of things on that site. I don't know what else we're doing.
We're doing a lot of work with our special education building administrators. So we present to them every month around specific topics and they actually take them back to their schools. Sometimes they work in concert with their special ed supervisors or sometimes they do their own presentations at monthly meetings about things that are specific, specific to special ed, but can be used universally to work with both regular ed and special ed teachers. And we ask them, what is it that you want us to talk about? What do you want to know? We go out, we do the research and then we, sometimes we present as a team, sometimes the supervisors present, I'll present, Julie present. But we just go out and we look for what it is they need and try to bring back various tools that'll be easy to implement, but something they can see like quicker turnaround, specifically around behavior.
We had, uh, we also, we had two years now of a parent engagement. I think Julie probably, Vicky brought that to you and we had series out there. So we had the parent, special education parent engagement series. It's a half-day on a Saturday. First year was very, very well attended. This last year wasn't so much because it was a big snowy day and icy day, but lots of appreciation from parents. Stanley Smith is our parent engagement coordinator now for special education. He's creating a survey so that when parents leave their IEP meeting, we flip the computer over to them. We don't see the results, it goes to a Survey Monkey type thing, but they can give us feedback about how the IEP went and how we can improve the IEPs.
And we're working on developing a special education parent council. Having representation from parents from various school levels as well as disability areas to kind of inform us about different things that we can do to help improve our practices and the things that we do to provide services for students who have special needs. And so, it's a lot of great stuff going on.
And last year, we brought all of the special education staff together in June, which I'm thinking that hadn't been happening before and to get everybody under the same roof, to hear the same message about where we were going in this work. And I think that really helped to launch the work that we've done this year. Because people saw the vision, they saw the mission, they saw their purpose. So I'm hoping we can come back together this year with everybody and see, let them celebrate some of the outcomes.
Where are you at in the process of the, you mentioned the parent council?
So we.
Stanley, Stanley put a survey out to the, um, the schools and the community agencies about parent. And I think the SEVA's got it, the lead teachers and some community agencies that both, that all of the engagement coordinators were familiar with, to see if they had input of parents, of students who are still currently in the district that have disabilities. So it's like, he just did that like two weeks ago, I think.
He did it last, he did it last week. So we sent a letter out asking for names of parents who could potentially be participants on this committee.
If you have ideas too, and again, if you have ideas about ways we can get professional development out there, we're more than happy to listen to that too. Because we really need to know what, you know, there's only a limited amount of us. And so that's why we're trying to get as many stakeholders involved in what we're doing so that we're doing the right thing that they need and they want, so. Do you know, do you have people you're, you know, that might be good at it or be interested?
I mean, I, I'm just thinking of, in general, how that's such a great idea to begin with. But now that I'm thinking about it, I would, I could possibly, how many people are you thinking in general, like how many?
So we want it to be no more than twenty, but our target is about, we're looking at between twelve and fifteen, just the way to get started. So he did a lot of research about, was it an appropriate size? He reached out to surrounding areas, so he knew people in Madison, he knew people in Appleton. He reached out to somebody like in Arizona. So he looked at various districts that looked, that mirrored our district and that also had these parent, special education advisory committees. And so he got a lot of feedback from them and, you know, asking them like, what's the appropriate amount? How many people should we have? Cause we don't want to have too, too small amount, but we don't want to have too many. So that's kind of what we're looking at. So we're asking for lots of names and then we're also looking at what specific areas are you coming from? So, you know, we want to make sure we have representation if you have an early childhood child. If you have a child that's in middle school, high school. Because as the kids progress through our system, the needs sometimes become different. So we want to make sure we have all of those different aspects, you know, within the council.
And we're looking for parents who are committed, but they don't necessarily have to be parents that think that we're great because we need to figure out ways to improve too, so.
How do you plan to, you know, to vet these people? How do you plan to look for these people?
So once we, so we're, so we've sent out a notice by our lead teachers and our various program support teachers, the parent engagement specialists and different community agencies to say, this is what we're looking for. If there are parents who have students who indeed have IEPs within our school district, we want to form this committee and we're gonna bring all of what we get. So say we get fifty or whatever, we're gonna look at the different mix of what we have. And then from there, we want to use like the process that you kind of use when you want to vet out, like when you're looking at curriculum or different things. So we're gonna reach out to the student services and teaching and learning to see like, what is it that, what process do you use to vet? To determine how you get this committee together. And we already have some great input from the Equity Committee because they have a
Equity.
Equity parent committee that has various constituents on it. So like people from higher education, people within the school district, people from other agencies, so.
That committee actually has two parents, had two parents of students with disabilities. I think one has since graduated, but they still have one parent who has disabilities. Not always good experiences, so she's been a very good, important person to talk to.
Yeah.
One of, I know I've talked to people about this before, but one of the things that I, um, as we transition our, our students with special education needs, you know, from our school district out into the community, to college, to wherever, wherever they go. And I don't have the answer, it's just something that always puzzles in my, in my head. But, but at what point for a student, especially a student that has reading difficulties or they're way behind in reading? Because there are so many technological assistive tools for people who can't read. And, but yet, there's a balance between providing this, you know, this tool that reads things for kids versus continuing with intervention and trying to get them to the point of reading. But have, do we, have we looked at the, the, not, adaptive tools that are, that are provided for students in college, whether it's TC or four-year colleges? I know all colleges have, have centers where they provide various readers and pens and, and all, all those kinds of things. But, but have, have we looked at that in terms of making sure that our students who, who can't read well enough to do it on their own in college, but have the capability of getting through college? Do we help them know what that feels like to do those, those, use those tools before they leave? Because, because when I was talking to, um, went to a diff, a couple of different college visits and you talk to the people in those offices, they say, the students never come. We have all these great tools and the students never show up. And, and it got me thinking that, do they not show up because, for one, there's a huge learning curve anytime you're trying to use a new tool? Two, they're, they're embarrassed and they aren't quite sure what it is and they just want to be like everybody else. But if they had been given that opportunity to have, and not everyone will, will have this, but I'm sure there are some students who will have that opportunity to be in a course like a junior, senior year, sophomore year in high school where they're using one of those tools. Someone's helping them understand how to use it to the best they can. And they have that experience of, wow, you know, I can get As in classes when I, when I use these tools and when I don't, I'm barely scraping by a C. And I just, I, um.
We have Read and Write for Google, which is, um, it, it's an amazing program that's out there that the colleges are using. We have girls that were in the CNN program at, or CNA, excuse me, program at, I believe it's at Preville, right? Or is it at East? It's at Preville, where the teacher came, the NWTC teacher came to our group and said, hey, I heard about this Read and Write for Google, what can you do to help me? My girls, they can't pass the test. We gave them the Read and Write for Google and that those girls, ninety-five percent of them passed the test so that they can now have their CNA licenses and they went on to school. So we've been really pushing the Read and Write for Google for special ed and EL has bought it also because it is a tool that they will use in college. It's on, it's available, a lot of what's in Google, Read and Write for Google is on most computers, but you have to know how to use it, use it, navigate it. So if you get the Read and Write for Google and you're familiar with it, it can help you with that. And we continue to increase our licenses because the more our teachers hear about it, the more interested they're in having it. Thus far, it's special education and EL that are only wanting to use it to, to level the playing field.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but yeah, that is a huge thing that has really helped our students. That's, now we're looking at going into the automotive program. We have a meeting next week and how can we make sure that we can get the kids in the East Automotive Program to be able to read their textbooks with Read and Write for Google? So there's word prediction, there's thesaurus is in there, there's, you, I, we could do an entire, I think we gave it to the Katie and Ed and Laura. I think we gave you the presentation on Read and Write for Google as one of the things that we have been doing. We didn't present it to you, but we handed you, we gave you a copy of the PowerPoint that they had done. I think my occupational therapist Lynn Bolton had done it. I'm almost positive I shared, I should have Vicky to share with you.
And then also.
That was a while ago, so you might not even remember. I give you so much stuff.
But also too, when the students are developing their transition plans, their PTPs that they have to do, starting at age of fourteen, we are really working with the teachers to make sure they start talking about those types of things. Letting students know what, how responsibility shifts when they graduate. So we let them know, like, your IEP doesn't follow you, you have to self-identify in order to get accommodations when you go to post-secondary institutions. So we start working with them early. The other thing that teachers also are starting to do is to know that, like, you can always consider, consider assistive technology. Usually we only use the, what we call more high-tech options, but we have so many different low-tech options that can be utilized, that you don't necessarily have to have the consultation of the assistive technology teacher. But you can also know what different tools we have and we have lots of different resources that the teachers can connect the students with early on so they can start using them. And so we're trying to encourage them to do that, their, their transition plans.
Yeah, so the PSTs are probably the ones that orchestrate the, the figuring out how to get the assistive technology into the hands of the students that need it?
If they, if they needed.
There's not PSTs in buildings anymore.
Yeah, just the.
The what?
The lead, the lead teachers.
The lead teacher.
Yeah, the lead teachers, so.
I'm calling the right thing.
Right, so the, especially, so the program manager can say, hey, we want to look at this, we want to talk about this. And then we have the lead teachers who can be that kind of liaison to ensure that they can get access to those types of things.
Is that part of the IEP form, so that it's?
It's a, it's actually.
Technology.
It's a question that's on every IEP and so we try to encourage teachers to, a lot of times they skip over it because they just think like, if it's like a low incident, you only use like, you know, specific. But we're like, no, it's so many low-tech options in the, like our ATPST, she gets real excited. Like if I say like, can you talk to a teacher, for example, about like if a student has issues with time management? And we can look into different options like for Fitbits, for different types of watches. And teachers don't recognize that you can get something as simple as that to help organize a student. That helps deal with their executive functioning issues, it helps them get to class on time and it helps them become more organized. And we like to start that, like, say for example, you're in middle school, getting ready to go to high school. where you really have to be more organized. So when teachers understand that it's like inclusive of the IEP, then they don't have a problem asking for it. But, you know, for so long, we just think it's very specific to a certain group. So we're trying to say no, like, it's available to all students to consider and talk about.
That's good, thanks.
We are also bringing folks in from the tech school and the colleges. When students are college-bound, they're tech school-bound, we're bringing them into IEPs in that process to work with them in the PTP process. So any tools that are used at those universities or tech college can be shared at that time and make those connections, and then we can train the students and teach them to get ready.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
But that's also our, and this is a sidetrack, but when John talked about getting rid of all of those, like, I, I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say there were fourteen different math classes out there. And all of them were everything except for the core math classes. So by giving all those math classes to the students with disabilities, which is primarily who was using them, we're essentially keeping them from going to college. So having higher expectations and giving them at least exposure to the curriculum at their grade level is what we're looking to do. As much as possible. Thank you. Any other questions? You guys get to go down early, right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, is there anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
No move.
Second.
What?
I don't want to rush it, but.
Well, no, I, everybody, yeah.
All right.
All right, move second, on favor. I proposed. All right, we are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school districts website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.